Okay, use my fancy gavel. Call to order, the Monday, February 4th, 2019, Falls Church Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Schaefer, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Wodisca?
Here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Ms. Hockenberry?
Here.
Mr. Krasner?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
And Mr. Quintus?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Rankin might join us a little later, based on his email. Um, can I get a motion with the stipulation that, uh, depending on how long item seven goes, we may, uh, switch around items eighteen.
So move.
Otherwise, let's go with this until otherwise. Can I guess, alright, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, alright, great. Uh, there are no speakers this evening. Have you received any petitions for items not on the agenda?
No, I have not.
Okay, alright, uh, let's start off with seven A. These are planning commission reports. So, uh, just to go through this, this should be a relatively quick meeting, meeting bef- the, the actual action portion, and then we're gonna move into the work session, which should take a bit of time. Uh, so, we're gonna skip all the way to the planning commissioners' reports, it's gonna feel backwards, but there's a rationale. Anybody have any reports they'd like to make?
There's pretty, not going on.
Um, I sent you some notes on the last-
You sure did, I appreciate that very much.
And I won't go through all that here, other than to say, uh, that, uh, the hit team was selected by the, uh, grad center for their development project.
Yeah, this is, this is the, uh, the committee on, uh, the, what are we calling it, the?
Campus coordinator.
Campus coordinator, I can never remember that, even though it's CCC. Campus coordinator, we, I was unable to attend, um, and, uh, Tim sat in my place here.
Yeah, so, other than that, uh, we should be getting, uh, materials from the school, uh, soon. It's, I guess it's with, uh, staff now, undergoing, uh, review.
That far along, wow.
Yeah, they're in design development phase right now, so.
Wow.
Alright, any other reports?
One-
Yeah?
Very short announcement, as the liaison to the historical commission, I was informed that this Thursday, uh, Mr. Henderson is gonna be giving a talk at the library about the history of Falls Church, and some of the, I'll read, I'll read the flyer, but it was distributed to historical commission members, it sounded interesting. If folks have the time to, uh, uh, talk on how the land of prominent Falls Church African Americans was seized for the construction of the highway in the early twentieth century. He'll use land records and maps, and Mr. Henderson will paint a picture of the community at the turn of the century, and describe how using eminent domain affected that community.
Yep.
Anyway, sounded interesting for those who are history buffs and have the time. That, that is all.
Alright. Uh, anyone else? Alright, then let's, um, move on to the planning director's report.
Thank you. A couple things not included in your report that I wanna talk about first. Uh, first, uh, first day of work for Carla Johnson, who joined, uh, the Community Planning and Economic Development Staff as the city's, uh, I'm sorry, as the department's administrative support. Um, she is a hundred percent of our administrative support personnel, so it's great to have her on board. Uh, she's gonna be doing a range of functions across the group, helping out a number of folks. I know tomorrow night, she's already scheduled to be at the EDA meeting, uh, to help with administering the meeting and taking notes for the meeting, and that'll be a big, uh, support for Becky Whitman, who is, uh, essentially a team of one, uh, by the org chart, and so we're trying to get as many resources as we can to help her out. Uh, obviously, economic development is a, is a critical function for the city. Uh, so she'll be helping out with, uh, so Carla will be helping with the EDA. Uh, she'll also be helping the planning staff clear the backlog of minutes for this group, uh, which I think many of you may know, there are some minutes from calendar year 2018 that didn't get reviewed and approved. Uh, so she'll be helping with that backlog. Uh, she'll also be doing things like, uh, front counter support, uh, providing staff support for the main phone line, which is something we've been short on, uh, as well as a range of other functions. I think, uh, we're also hoping she can help with, uh, move to City Hall, which is scheduled for March. Uh, so these are obviously important things, and so it's really great to have her on board. She's got, uh, at least a decade of experience, uh, as a working professional. She was working, I think, with City of Alexandria before this, and so she's very familiar with, um, procedures and operations and, and how municipalities work. Uh, let's see, so that's Carla Johnson. Uh, let's see, upcoming agenda items, just to give you all a look ahead at what's coming. Uh, it is on the back of the agenda, that's at the, the dais in front of you tonight. Uh, very busy sessions for the group coming up. Uh, one thing that we had talked about was March 4th, as the evening for the planning commission advanced. Uh, as you'll see, is another bullet on there, is action on the rules of procedure. Uh, earlier, uh, we had talked about that being an action item on February 19th. Given what's already on the nineteenth agenda, I think the idea was to move that to the night of the advance. Uh, an item not shown on the nineteenth here when this went to print, was that that's also, I think, a night for a, uh, work session on the high school site plan. Uh, so that night of the nineteenth is, is, uh, gonna be a busy one.
That is very busy.
Yep, that's why I wanted to chat with you afterwards. I think that might be a meeting where we may wanna do, uh, maybe some meal service or something that would break up the night perhaps into two sessions, and have something that can keep the greet, the group fresh and energized for, for all of the items. We've looked at that, um, I think the issue is that, just looking ahead, uh, March is when the group will be talking about the ten acre development, and there was a desire to make sure that that was the lone item on those agendas. And so anything that can't get in in February is essentially then looking at late April, early May, and I think that makes it a challenge. The other option is special meetings for the group.
I mean, I, I almost would say having the advance as a special meeting?
Mike, please.
Would be better than having it tacked on to a regular meeting? My two cents, I don't know how the group feels about it, but I feel like it'd be more productive than if we were, I don't know, I don't know how the group feels about that, but I feel like, and you know, everyone knows I'm not looking for additional meetings, but if we, but if it made more sense to have the advance as its own special meeting, that, you know, we could advertise it, and then we can meet any day or time that's convenient for people. Um, I don't know, just my, just a suggestion, you guys can talk about it.
You'd have to come up with the time pretty soon to advertise it.
Right, we need a couple weeks to advertise it, but I, yeah, that's just, just an idea. If that doesn't work, then we'll obviously persevere, food will help.
Bring our sleeping bags.
I would definitely consider that. I don't know how long some of these items are gonna take, like, but I, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss it, and I'll come, bring it back to everybody and see what, what the thinking is, uh, if some of these things can be moved, if maybe we wanna double up on the, later in March, or, or the CIP may not be a, a big, long item, depending on what we hear this evening, so that could, let's address it, uh. But it looks like a very full night, especially if you have the high school site plan on there.
Right.
Cause that is likely to take a long time.
Yeah.
Shannon, was I, did I agree to talk on the eleventh to City Council? That's like actually happening.
It has Paul Stoddard's name on it, though, on the City Council agenda.
Does it?
That's the, that's the staff member.
Responsible for making him show up.
Yeah, if it doesn't work, then, then they look at me.
What time is that, is that seven thirty? That I need to show? Okay. Alright, go for it, go ahead.
Uh, let's see, the planning directors' report, items that were actually in your packet. Uh, uh, first up is Big Chimneys Park. Uh, the administrative site plan for, uh, uh, is up for administrative, um, consideration for approval. Shannon, can we pull up the, um, make that keyboard work?
City council's meeting, it's still in the, uh, senior room or whatever it is?
Yeah. Yeah, senior center.
Senior center.
Nope, uh, February 4th, down at the bottom. Uh, Big Chimneys, annotate attachment two. Uh, okay, uh, let's see, application is being considered, so this is, uh, application here, right? This is a city project, but still it gets reviewed, just like any other that requires a site plan, coming through the planning staff and the development review committee. Uh, and then, uh, some site plans, uh, most site, site plans, uh, ordinarily are reviewed and approved by the planning commission. There is an allowance within the city ordinances that allows for the, uh, for review and approval by the, at the planning director's discretion, uh, provided that there is no addition of, um, uh, building square footage, uh, and that's certainly the case for this project here. Uh, so what's on the screen, uh, these were the annotations that were made to the layout that was last reviewed by staff. Uh, they're a little hard to see, uh, but I wonder if we can just zoom in, maybe on the right side? Uh, and some of them, a lot of them were urban design related. Uh, relocating the pavilion, uh, it's, it's, uh, sort of at a central area in the park. Moving that south of the path was seen as a way to open up the play area, uh, as well as providing a clear view through the park. Uh, clearing up the materials, uh, there on the front entry plaza, uh, creating a nicer aesthetic with colored concrete, uh, and making sure that the asphalt path connects into the plaza in a, um, more sophisticated way. Uh, and then adding more activities to that plaza space, that as submitted, it was originally standard benches. The idea of adding gaming tables to the plaza as well, to provide more activities for a wider range of folks. Uh, there was also a, a plan added, uh, suggestion for adding a plan note to the bottom of the sheet, uh, providing for future interparcial access, that's the bowling alley site, uh, along that property. The idea being that if something redevelops, you wanna have a space to tie into the park and provide a direct connection. So let's say it now while we're looking at Big Chimneys Park. And then there were also some notes on the sheet about future landscaping, so, uh, adding benches throughout the park, uh, developing landscaping standards that support that idea of, of, uh, what's called crime prevention through environmental design, uh, the idea of visibility that you can see through the park, you feel comfortable using it. Uh, and then lastly, uh, how the landscaping adjacent to the Bull America site should be treated. Today, it's, it's overgrown with several invasive species, uh, that is providing actually a habitat value, and so the idea is that as that landscaping is managed, it would be done to clear out the invasives, uh, but still providing, uh, that habitat space.
I applaud you. I applaud her.
Uh, and so, uh, these were the notes that, that were on the plan sheet. This, uh, appeared to be pretty consistent with, uh, with the direction that the planning commission has often taken these plans. This has already been through an engagement process with the adjacent owners, the Wreckin' Parks Board. It was, uh, before the planning commission as a work session item. Uh, included in the report tonight was the adjacent property owner notice, just as, uh, an information piece. Uh, and so the thought was, given this, uh, the state of the, the plans, there's also a desire to get the site plan process wrapped up now, while the, uh, project manager is still on staff. Kim Callahan, who is the project manager, will be leaving, uh, in less than a couple weeks, and so there is an opportunity now to, to finish this up. Um, so this is before the planning commission to make you all aware of this, and to, to test the temperature of the planning commission, if there are any significant changes that need to be made, we could of course do that. Um, and if there are minor fixes, we can also make those, uh, notes on the plan sheets prior to approval.
Will it be somebody taking over for Kim when she leaves, or?
Uh, yeah, so Public Works is, has been staffing up again, uh, already. There's a, a new stormwater engineer, there was a consultant that's helping out with civil engineering, uh, a new CIP project manager started today, and I understand, um, that I think an offer's gonna be made shortly for another, uh, uh, public works engineer. So, uh, I think they, they're a group that's going through staff turnover, and now they're on the upswing, which I think is a good thing.
I just hope that the budget for it will sustain it and not have to be valued engineered to death. Cause I'm, you know, it just so happens so often. And that's, this has been majorly valued engineered right now to where it is.
I think there are some elements of this that are a positive. I think initially, there was a thought of a grand entry plaza on the front. Uh, I think this plaza as designed actually provides a lot more usable square footage, that there's no pathway cutting through it, so if you were to reserve the pavilion for a party, you would be offset from the rest of the park use. Uh, I think the plaza design is, is actually quite a bit nicer in terms of its simplicity. Uh, that the other one had multiple pathways, so there was actually a lot of hard space right up front, where this actually, uh, brings it back. Uh, this also accommodates, uh, a future connection with a neighborhood traffic calming project, uh, to make a neighborhood gateway, uh, entryway into, uh, the Winter Hill neighborhood. So, uh, off the top of the picture is the Winter, Winter Hill neighborhood. Uh, off the picture to the right is the, the back of the 301 West Broad project, where the Harris Teeter is. And so the thought was that as Annandale is crossing Maple Avenue, coming up on the park, coming up on Harris Teeter, it's, it's leaving that heavily commercial area and heavily public area and moving into a quieter space. And the, and so the thought was, let's start tapering down the curb edges, uh, let's start putting gateway signs in, and then you can slow, slow folks down before they hit that intersection with Annandale and Gundry. Alright, not hearing any-
I don't have, I don't have any real comments, I mean, this is one of those things that, uh, Paul and I had discussed a while ago, actually, about being done through administrative approval, that this was, you know, not something we need to hold a whole mother public hearing on, these were small changes. So, uh, this is, we, we talked about this, you know, at the beginning of the year, um, just a couple of meetings ago, where trying to lighten the agenda with, with things like this, where if they can make these kind of administrative approvals, this is an example of it. Uh, I think we talked about, this is actually all the way back in like October or something like that. Uh, so I just wanna just ask in general, is this, um, this is consistent with what I believed, the kinda thing that the, the planning, uh, director can make on their own? Does anybody have a problem with it outside of?
I don't have a problem, but has there been any, I mean, these, these changes are fine, and they're not gigantic changes, but is there any public outreach on this, like even to like the Winter Hill Association? Because, uh, these don't seem like major changes to me, but we've often felt that way, and then had neighbors come in and had legitimate things that they had a problem with. So, I, that's my only, my only concern is when we do that, and we don't have a public meeting, and we have no idea if people are okay with this.
I know that there was some pushback on a couple entrances, they brought it down to the one back there.
Yeah.
But, you know, this is going on, going on, it's so long.
I know, I did, I don't wanna hold this up and, or anything like that. I'm just wondering if we, if, just as a courtesy, maybe to send a note to, cause they do have two, isn't there two, there's a Winter Hill and there's another group there? Just as a courtesy to send them that there's just been some minor changes since the last public meeting?
Mm-hmm.
You know, I just, I think when we don't do that, then we hear later back, and people are just like, well, there wasn't even a public meeting on these changes.
There's a notice in the fact.
Yeah, there is.
There was a public notice that went out in July, January 10th.
Right, well, I mean, I, I was just, but I don't know if there, there hasn't been an, um, ability to comment? But maybe, does it, I, I said maybe you, did you receive any, has anyone acknowledged these changes?
Uh, so a lot of this is relying on the work that's, the groundwork that's already been laid, uh, by the project team, as well as the Wreckin' Parks Board, um, to have that continuous dialogue. If you remember, there was an update to the parks master plan that, that was the spearhead for, uh, developing this park plan. And so, uh, this plan is still true, those ideas of, of maximizing, uh, open space, uh, um, uh, providing the, the separate play areas, providing entrances to the parks. In fact, the, the part, the network of paths was actually adjusted in response to community input. And so I think, uh, what's shown on the sheet is consistent with what everyone's been heard. I, certainly your idea of, of sending it back out to the community makes sense, and we can do that.
Well, I'm, at least my experience with the notices, they only go to the houses within a hundred and fifty feet of the project.
Mm-hmm.
And this park has a, is a much larger neighborhood involved than a hundred and fifty feet. And that's why I'm just, that's my only concern. At least if the associations have noticed of it, then that'll go to a wider audience. Because it, it just, in my experience, people, we send the notice, some people really read them, some people don't, but a lot of times, there's people outside the hundred and fifty feet. And I don't know, maybe that's one thing we should think about as a city, is maybe a hundred and fifty feet is not the right measure for the notices.
For that kind of, that's, that's developed.
Well, I, I don't know, I, I know it's enough trouble to send that.
And the property's posted, right, there's a sign, on the property, do we post admission of site plans or?
Uh, for site plans, I don't think so, I think, uh, rezonings and comp plan amendments.
Okay.
It is not signed.
And then, should we have to go through any value engineering, you know, of that? You know, we had such a big mess of the downtown park, and, you know, that, it's, uh, very frustr- very frustrating.
That's actually an idea, I mean, just, I mean, whether it's a legal requirement or not to sign it, I mean, you know, it's not uncommon in public projects to have-
Something's happening here.
Some type of right, some type of explanation, so when people begin to see that there's gonna be construction, it shows them a picture, maybe a plan, it gives them contact info, to show them what's involved. That's actually a lot of people, you know, people who use the park, that's how they would-
Your tax dollars at work.
Right, exactly, it shows them what's being done, if they have questions or concerns. Granted, that may be sometimes too late to make changes, but, um, if you're, if you're using the associations and it's on the website, that's usually pretty good.
There should be some sort of a, uh, notification within the community, the community board directors or association, that could get word out too, which would be much more, you know.
Especially the benefits, I mean, I think the playground, oh, that'll be obvious. Stormwater won't be, but I think, you know, there's a lot of money being spent on it, and hopefully it'll result in some considerable improvements in that area, so it's nice to, to highlight that.
Yeah, they're gonna kill all those mosquitoes. God.
Alright, um, so this is just one example, I think we're gonna about to see another one, that, uh, we talked about, uh, not having to come this before the planning commission, so I'll let you go to the next item here.
Mm-hmm. Uh, second item included in the report, uh, is an administrative site plan that has already been acted on. Uh, that was, uh, interior courtyard changes to the Oakwood Apartments.
I'll give you an example of that, I live on Rich Place, which is off of Roosevelt. So, one side of our street's actually very close, and I did not get this notice. But I may be a hundred, not a hundred and fifty feet, because the cemetery's between me and Oakwood.
Yeah.
And, not that this matters that much to us, but I'm just saying, as an example, the notice doesn't always work as well as we think.
Uh, so this was, um, I think, uh, many commissioners are aware that this property was recently acquired. It's about five hundred apartments, uh, one of the largest residential complexes in the city, uh, located along Roosevelt Boulevard with good access to the East Falls Church Metro, as well as the Eden Center. Uh, the new owners had come in for an update to the plaza space. And what's shown on the screen in front of you is the, uh, new layout that'll be developed. Uh, the existing swimming pool is maintained, it's the sort of baseball diamond shaped, uh, structure in the upper middle, uh, hard to, hard to describe that. The big blank space on the far right is the existing clubhouse that maintains its existing structure, uh, although the amenity space inside is updated, that's handled through the building permit process. There are new, uh, brick pathways added, that's what all the brick hatching is throughout the area. Uh, there's a half, uh, court basketball court that's maintained, as well as one tennis court. I think currently there are three. Um, there's also a new playground that's added, uh, as well as seating areas throughout. And so this was seen as, uh, as an update to the amenities that were constructed with the original building in the seventies. Uh, other site layouts, uh, other changes to the site are, are minimal if any. Uh, through the site plan process, there was, uh, some initial thought given, there was some thought given to, uh, future development on this or future sites, uh, so as part of the site plan process, the owner is providing, uh, dedicated easement along Roosevelt Boulevard for future streetscape easement, or future streetscape enhancements, uh, should the city choose to invest in those. Uh, and then also notes about interparcial access, uh, on the boundaries with the Eden Center, uh, should any redevelopment occur there.
I understand, I was over there, um, a while back, because, um, one of my Girl Scouts, hers, um, aunt is a manager there, and we were doing something there. Anyway, and they had mentioned that the new owners have, are targeting a different market. That they're not, is it, like, you know, for a long time, they were really government oriented.
Right, right.
Yeah, so she had mentioned to me that they were going to work on the amenities, because they needed to get better amenities to compete against all the new construction that have much better amenities. And so that, so, I don't know, for good or bad, that they're, they're trying to target a totally different market.
I think it's a good thing to see a property like this get some investment, uh, because absent that, you're looking at a building that's forty years old, and so if you can invest in it and continue it, uh, in a high level of service, I think that's a positive for the city. Absent that, you're looking at what would likely be a, a tear down and reconstruction.
Yeah, all, that was all short-term residents too, you know, just for so long.
Right.
The last item in the director's report, this is responding to a request from the planning commission at the last meeting, and that is, uh, a report on the voluntary concessions. I think that's also loaded. Yeah. Uh, so the, the request from the commission was for information about, um, uh, developer contributions regarding, uh, public facilities, schools, library, and other things. Uh, this is a report from 2017 that was prepared by the Economic Development Office. This generally gets updated every two years, uh, so it is due for an update this year. And, uh, this chart, what it walks through is, uh, the mixed-use projects going all the way back to the Broadway. Uh, it looks at then net and gross tax revenues, uh, on a project basis, as well as a per acre basis. Uh, and then it also highlights, um, uh, the uses in terms of programming, number of units, square footage of commercial, uh, the project, uh, size in terms of land area, uh, and then, uh, the highlights of the voluntary concession package, the developer contributions on the far right.
Do you happen to recall what the total assessed value is for the entire city? I'm just curious what this represents as a percentage of the total.
Yeah. It's about four hundred. Uh, it's, uh, a penny works out to, to four hundred thousand dollars, so that times-
From a budget standpoint, I was saying of assessed value, just the, on the far right-hand column, you've got four, five hundred and forty-five million is the assessed value of these projects. And I was just curious what percent of the total assessed value of the city this represents, probably sizable percentage, but.
Yeah. Can we scroll down to the bottom there? I assume there's a total, so it's, uh, five hundred million, so it, uh, yeah, that's about an eighth of the city's total assessed value.
Eight, okay, yeah.
I, I could check those numbers, but I, it's, it's substantial.
It's a big, yeah, it's a big amount, so.
Yeah, the, the, in general, I think this was the motivation for declaring the planning opportunity areas back in the early two thousands, was a recognition that commercial areas developed at point one to point two-five FAR are not gonna pull their weight in a community that's seeing redevelopment and in need of reinvestment in its commercial, uh, its, uh, capital facilities. Um, and so when you take a, a site that is developed at point one or point two-five FAR, and can turn that into something at two and a half, three, three and a half, then suddenly that's worth a lot more.
Right.
Yeah, we've done a lot of work in eighteen years.
And this isn't the only community that's going through this transition. Uh, Fairfax County has stood up their office of community revitalization, recognizing that areas like Bailey's Crossroads, Seven Corners, are not delivering on what, uh, people are looking for anymore, and they're in need of a refresh. Um, the city's commercial areas borrow some of those same ideas, uh, strip commercial retail, um, uh, aging, uh, buildings, uh, uh, lack of office space or move-up office space for, uh, desirable office tenants. And so I think these ideas, this, the FAR range that the city's been developing in is also consistent with what's going on in the rest of the country, and in other places that are looking to redevelop from that nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties development pattern.
You know, this question keeps coming up, you know, you know, talking about educating, uh, the community about it, because even at the last Sunday meeting, you know, a gentleman asked, why are we still building apartments? Or, you know, just, cause he didn't get it, that he's got, you know, as a house with two kids, and, you know. It was, you know, it's always interesting, you know, we still have a lot of education to do.
Well, yeah, and, uh, you know, uh, there was just a staff level meeting at, uh, the council of governments last week. Uh, it was a joint meeting of the housing directors and planning directors from the entire, uh, council of governments region, which includes Maryland, DC, and Virginia. And they were talking about the housing shortage, that's not a Falls Church housing shortage, it is a regional housing shortage. And so they're talking about how are, uh, what is each jurisdiction's approach gonna, gonna be to this issue? I think that's a good time for the city to be looking at its demographics chapter. Of course, a, a work session is scheduled for that next week. Um, thinking about what's going to happen for the city between now and the year 2045, and, and how does the city, uh, wanna react or respond, uh, to those pressures and take advantage of the opportunities. That is, uh, those are the items that I had for the director's report.
Okay, uh, thank you, any other questions about that?
I'm actually curious, was there any other feedback from the council of governments, the housing, the regional housing meeting you just talked about?
Uh, so unfortunately, I couldn't attend the, uh, meeting in person, uh, but I did hear from folks that were in attendance that it was a good conversation about, uh, policy changes and a wider cooperation with, uh, the business community, that not just, uh, investors that are moving into the region, uh, but also maybe some folks that are already in the region recognizing that if they wanna continue to attract labor and talent, um, they need to find a way to make that possible.
Alright, the, uh, next item is, uh, seven C correspondence. We received three different pieces of correspondence relating to all sorts of issues. Um, one on the Founder, Founder's Row construction noise, a statement to the Falls Church City Council regarding, I think- One on the Founder's Road construction noise, a statement to the Falls Church City Council regarding, I think it was Park and Lee, and then some parking restrictions.
Curious on the Park and Lee memorandum, since that's dated August thirteenth, I'm just curious what prompted that to come now.
In last session's division report, there was a recording of all the active applications before the planning staff and the planning commission. One of them was the Park and Lee proposal for that site. And seeing that listed on the planning commission's items prompted the request from the letter writer to include it in the materials.
And we haven't seen that yet.
We got a presentation, you know, six, eight months ago with the council. And I actually, I think that many of the comments made in this correspondence are similar to the comments that we made at that discussion. I think the way I recall that discussion without any specificity was generally like, we need this type of condominium housing in the city. It had a long way to go. There are all the issues about density and height were all, you know, valid concerns and that everybody was aware of it. But overarching, this would be something good for the city. So I, it's good to get this correspondence and good to read it, but I didn't think it disagreed with what I remember from our meeting in general.
And who knows when the next proposal coming in on that site.
I mean, but I think it's good feedback for them to hear from the city, from the residents as well, not just from those who were sitting at the table at time. And the other two were just information. I don't think we have to do anything regarding, you know, parking restrictions and and it sounds like the noise was addressed, so. All right, perfect timing, 'cause the next item on our agenda is the capital improvements program. Cindy, do you need a few minutes to set up and unpack what looks like to be a lot of paper? Okay, well, like I said, your timing couldn't be better. We are, we are at that stage of meeting. Thank you.
Does the FCCPS test is working?
Yeah, FCC.
But I don't think it's like secure, so I wouldn't do anything special on it.
My machine reacts back.
Well, I'm just saying, you're on your own device, you don't open your email or anything right now.
All right, well, while Ms. Mester is finishing setting up, let me tee off this very exciting time of year. As we begin discussing the capital improvements program or the CIP. As everybody on the commission is aware, this is an odd year, so we are in theory not gonna be adding any new projects, but allowing for ones that we discussed last year to take its course and continue the funding. We're gonna cover this over the next two meetings, tonight and on the nineteenth, and where we can provide guidance as to how this budget money should be spent. So I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna get a presentation overall and then we get this notebook every year, which is broken down into various tabs and gives us some more detail about the various projects that are usually summarized in tab three. I assume that's, and they are again this year. All right, so everybody following at home, you can turn to tab three and see the numbers. All right, that was my big introduction.
Okay, I was hoping to connect to the P drive in case I needed to bring up the magic spreadsheet, but we will adapt as needed. So thank you, Chair, for the introduction and for the opportunity to join you again this year. It's always my honor. I think we do have actually some good news within the CIP, although some challenges continue. But we were able to do some work in the transportation arena that I think is favorable long-term. So what you have before you this evening is a copy of the PowerPoint. This will be put on the website tomorrow. Also, a memo that is sort of just teeing up today's work session and then will be framed up for the February nineteenth public hearing and action. So there's no motion this evening, as you indicated, but I did put a draft motion in for your consideration for the nineteenth, just in case you have some feedback this evening, then I can work with Mr. Stotter to be ready for your action on the nineteenth. The one through six justifications are identical to what you adopted last year, the ones that are in gray. I didn't do any editing.
And, I'm sorry.
Where's that?
It's a standalone.
Oh, it's a standalone document. All right, we got two things, three things passed up. Got it, okay. So one through six, I'm sorry, is the same.
Same as last year.
Same as last year, okay, got it.
So they're put there just as a starting point. If you want to modify the justifications, then I can tee it up for you for action on the nineteenth. So with that, I'll start with the PowerPoint cross-reference to the notebook where it's helpful just to orient everybody to the notebook and then, of course, be glad to answer your questions along the way or at the end. So we'll go over process, project status, financial summary, schedule and questions at the end. But I do wanna take a few moments to start off with sort of the celebration of what has accomplished since the year, since I've been before you. It's amazing how time flies, but we are making progress and of course, there's still a lot of projects underway. But Van Buren is done and on the top right photo, you can see our ribbon cutting. All the bell shelters that we had funding for are installed and always potential for future ones if locations and funding are identified. Cherry Hill Park Playground, as we know, is very actively well-loved and used and officially open. So that's very exciting. Neighborhood Traffic Calming continues to move forward and a little farther in the presentation, I'll do a little bit more details. The picture there is an excerpt from the website with the web link to Neighborhood Traffic Calming. It's an ongoing project, obviously, so there's always completed actives and inactives and one in process. And we finished Roosevelt Boulevard, Roosevelt Avenue Safety Improvements with that intersection improvement. The traffic pole is finally installed. It was actually installed, hit by a car and then we had to go through insurance and get it replaced so that we could actually have the CIP finished. But it is a nice, safe intersection and roadway now, much improved. Some of the projects that are in process and of course, this slide, next two slides will not be all 'cause we'd have a hundred slides this evening if I did all our active projects. But we're continuing to work South Washington and I have some follow-up information for you on that. Sewer, traffic signals and bike share. The equipment's been ordered. The pre-construction meeting will be happening in two weeks and we're hoping still to be on target for a spring rollout. So we're still working that with Caryano Nino's lead. In process is Mount Daniel and that almost moved to the accomplished list, but the parking lot and landscaping is not done due to weather. So next time you see it, it will be officially done. We are, of course, in George Mason High School project with construction designs due shortly and then going through site plan and construction, so that's progressing along. Mary Riley Stiles Library is at thirty-five percent design and I'll have a little bit of more information for you later on for some project details. Larry Graves Turf is still working through with Fairfax County. That's the joint project. Big Chimneys has the additional money from January. Council's action to appropriate three hundred and fifty thousand dollars more so that design can progress with the stormwater as well as the park. And Mr. Stotter is working with you all and the staff on the site plan related to Big Chimneys. And City Hall Public Space and Safety Improvements is progressing and I will have some more details for you in your slides and response to your memo. But what you have there is a picture on the left of the dais before the millwork went in and it is positioned so it would be where you're sitting when you're conducting planning commission meetings back in the new chambers, looking out towards the audience in a soft view so you have a chance to look at each other a little bit more instead of a straight line. And so that's the backside here. This is the new window wall that you can see from the rear of the parking garage and this will be where the pews and the public are.
You're gonna give us a date of completion later on or, okay.
Just teasing you. I just don't wanna repeat myself, so I'm gonna make you wait a little bit. And this is a picture.
Helps ratings anyway.
This is the terrace. This is actually Wyatt and I on there when we were filming the last video. So this is the terrace and the green roof. And over here in the distance is the community center, just to kind of give you an orientation. We do continue to keep the snapshot updated. Quarterly is our goal. We did it in December. It is posted on the website, so that's a website link. It's three pages long, so we have a lot of projects in process. Green still being go on schedule, blue completed, yellow, some cautionary tales for usually the funding or staffing resources. And red would be worst stop. We have a major issue to work through. Our goals for the CIP remain consistent with reinvesting in our community infrastructure and those are in the areas of facilities, transportation, utilities, everything. So it's not just facilities and it's not just roads. It's a full gamut of infrastructure, as you all know, with a lot of your area plans and master plans. Continuing the six-year CIP adoption with an additional four years, so we have a ten-year-long view. This will be the second year of that and we fleshed the out years a little bit more. Of course, wanna retain financial strength and keep having dedicated funding for capital and maximizing our transportation match, our commercial industrial equivalent, CIE. So what will be presented to you will be consistently with the comp plan and also your fiduciary responsibility per city code to make sure it's financially sustainable. So as I go through this presentation, I've tried to target answers to the January twenty-second memo that you provided, which was very helpful, so I can make sure I'm focusing on what were priority areas for you all. Those items are listed in the cover memo, but I have slides related to them. One of those was to make sure we were focused on comp plan compliance and how do these projects rely to it. So I will tee to that throughout the presentation. But here officially note that we are consistent and compliant with the vision and the chapters, all the chapters, including the updates for chapter seven, six. And as you know, we're working on the three other ones. And I put that in here for the public though, so they would be aware of the holistic approach of CIP. Consistency of the comp plan, also the four adopted POAs and the additional one in process for West End. I wanna call your attention to the 2018 financial policies, which are in tab two in their entirety. Last year, when I was before you, council had not adopted the updated financial policies. So you reviewed the 2017 ones and then two weeks later, the new financial policies were adopted in February. They were, of course, talked about a lot and certainly were part of the consideration, but not officially part of the CIP last year. So towards the end of this presentation, I will highlight the changes to the financial policies as it relates to the CIP. But what's presented to you this evening is fully compliant with those financial policies, which included the big issue of the high school and the financing, which last year was not before you till we did the second CIP amendment to include that. So to kind of give a nice look to comp plan consistency, I created a word cloud for you 'cause I was trying to figure out how to really visualize the key factors of the vision, the core values and then the key project titles and outcomes. And when I put them all in, it was kind of exciting to see how sustainability is centered, but you've got mobility in parks and schools and facilities and that regional economic environment transit. A lot of those key things that you all spend a lot of time talking about, the community does. So there's a fun visual of comp plan compliance with this CIP.
Great collection of words.
As the chair noted, we're, sorry.
No, no, I was gonna say.
Wonder if sustainability is there for multiple reasons too, like, you know, financial energy.
It is. It is. Sustainability, when you think about the vision and the core values, is there a lot. Resiliency, public safety, financial environment, so, exactly. As the chair noted, we are on a biennial cycle. I do wanna clarify one thing though, 'cause the even year is for the year in which we're adopting, which would be twenty, not the year we're in. And actually, Mr. Stotter and I were talking about that 'cause it can be confusing to staff, when's it even and when's it odd year. So it is an even year because we're adopting for FY twenty. That said, with a lot of projects in play, with constrained staff and funding resources, I actually was not encouraging a lot of new projects, although there are three in here. But we really need to work what we have. We've got, you know, this is your next funding cycle, but we gotta remember City Hall's not done yet, library is just kicking off in the design piece, the high school's just kicking off on the design piece. So there's a lot of big projects out there. South Washington's not done, et cetera. But there are some new projects, a school facility reinvestment, which I'll give you some more detail on. Practice Field Lights, which would be up at the high school and so is being tied into the redevelopment up there. And then we have allocated some money to transportation, pre-scoping and grant development 'cause that's one of the things where we didn't have money to get really good cost estimates and actually prepare the grants. So it was always sort of a hodgepodge as we tried to pull resources together and oftentimes, we didn't have good estimates and so therefore, that's why we're currently in situations where we've applied for more grants, but they were just to fill gap financing. So I really feel this is an important and positive step forward in the transportation arena. And then we have expanded funding for Fellows Park, Neighborhood Traffic Calming to give some local money. Pavement and parking structure were unfunded next, last year, so I'll give you some updates on that. That's part of the positive piece. And facility security, much of that, once again, now that we got more detailed cost estimates.
Will you be going into more detail for the expanded funding?
Yes, ma'am. Some key focuses before we get into the details, but here's some more. Transportation project grant development is proposed at a hundred thousand a year. Practice Field Lights is four hundred thousand. That is in here as a joint effort with the school. So two hundred thousand would come from the general government and two hundred thousand from the schools. School facility reinvestment right now is not funded and I'll go. School, school facility reinvestment right now is not funded and I'll go through some more detail, but I felt it was important for them to start doing long-range planning for reinvesting into the facilities and they identified some critical needs also in the near term, so that both on the general government and school side, we don't find ourselves with extremely inefficient buildings fifty years later, 'cause we're not reinvesting in them, which I know we've talked a lot about here. We do need to identify some PEGO resources for facilities, 'cause a lot of the projects that we need to do are not debt financed by accounting standards and so that is a challenge that I'll describe in more detail. WAMADA re- continues to be a challenge on our budget. We worked through last year with the state providing more money, but also taking some of our regional money to do that and we're still working through implementing those state code changes, but in addition to that, WAMADA's proposed budget would have a five-hundred-thousand-dollar increase, operating and capital, which is their middle scenario. They have three scenarios out. So, the CIP before you, I have based it on the middle scenario. I'd like to think we get the three percent increase, but I'm not optimistic, because the state code actually allows them some exceptions. There's no way we could afford their upper end, so for the purposes of being moderately conservative, we have based it on the middle scenario. We will continue to be working with WAMADA to reduce it, 'cause it has an impact on operating budget as well as capital. So, next, I'd like to go through utilities and we'll do general fund in schools and transportation. Do utilities first, because it's oftentimes the less complex, because it has the enterprise fund, but it's equally as important to our infrastructure, so I don't want to shortchange it. So, starting with the sanitary sewer, no fee increase proposed in this CIP and operating budget. They will need to do a good rate analysis, it's been six years, so that we can reassess it. We are continuing, however, to commit to investments into the rehab of our sewer pipes, so that's four million over the six years in PEGO. Their treatment plant improvements, both at Arlington, Alexandria slash Fairfax, who treat our water, depending on which watershed, and so that to maintain federal compliance, so that's our portion of that share. And then there's capacity and expansion, both for existing systems through Fairfax, we need to purchase capacity, but also for the West Falls Church. So, that fourteen million includes a portion for the economic development up there. That fourteen million is all covered with developer.
Fees.
Cap fees, not the sewer rate. So, the sewer rate is covering the rehab to our sewer lines and treatment plant. That would be tab ten in your notebook and I think I will pause for a moment, just to give a little orientation, using tab ten as an example. If you flip to that, you'll see what we call our project sheets. The first one happens to be Arlington's non-expansion capital. There, for any of these projects, you'll have a description, a little bit of a descriptive photo, and then the funding per fiscal year, some notes, if there's for funding notes and impact on operating cost, and then it will always end with conformity with the comp plan for that specific project. So, you will see that for all the projects that we'll talk about. Some of the tabs, like schools, will have some additional information, where they've given me the school board's adopted CIP and some enrollment numbers, you'll have that. Or Arlington gave me some additional information on one of their CIP projects, so I'll supplement some of the folders for that.
Yeah, I really like the way you do the bullet points at the bottom like this and I think that's, it's a good addition to this.
Good. Yeah, we're still refining them. Not all of them are there yet, but we're getting there, so thank you. That'll be good feedback for staff.
I know that's a lot of work.
It's helpful to say more than just consistent with the comp plan. For stormwater, once again, no rate increases proposed or will need to be a study, since we've been operating this enterprise fund now, but it is really critical for implementing and replacing and restoring the sixty-year-old infrastructure, to comply with federal mandates, mitigate flooding and our overall environmental focus. The projects are focused on the watershed management plan. A lot of the initial ten top priorities have been worked. We are tight on funding in the stormwater utility on the capital side. There's plenty on the operating, but to pay the debt service to do more projects, now that we've gone through the first round, we're looking through this next operating budget to see if they can shift some money over to debt service, so we can do additional projects. We do have proposed in the CIP eight million dollars of continued reinvestment into the stormwater infrastructure. It will need to be debt, so we're needing to work on the debt service, so it can be funded. That's why we'll need to do a rate increase, but we do believe there's ways to work it without increasing the rates in the near term. In the out-years, there's still proposed, as you saw last year, a ten-million-dollar grant concept for four mile run, four mile run, to do daylighting and erosion control, but that would be a future grant application, but it's still showing for documented need. And this tab is a good opportunity. It's a busy slide, so I'm not gonna go for it through it in detail, but I would, I would draw your attention to tab three for this sheet. The projects are under tab ten, but the summary sheet would be on page three dash. Thank you. Well, that's transportation. Where's my utilities? There we go, three dash six, the last one in the tab. So, this'll give me a chance to orient you to tab three a little bit. All of the sheets will be numbered three. The first number will be the tab, the second number's the page. If we make changes between now and your adoption, I'll give you a revised page and it will show it, so you can swap it out in your notebook. These summary pages take all the projects and put them on one sheet, so that you can see the project, the dollar amount and the overall funding. So, for utilities, we're looking at thirty-nine million dollars worth of investment over the six-year period. Now, on the slide, I'm just showing the six years, just because of trying to retain some visibility and readability, but if you look in tab three dash six, you will see that there's also out-years, FY twenty-six to twenty-nine, and you'll have that in the transportation and general fund as well, and then that gives you a ten-year total as we do the look ahead. You'll have a similar summary page for general fund in schools and transportation. In your January twenty-second memo, you had some focus priority areas on sustainability and LED, so, streetlights, so this was the most logical place to put it. The other pieces of the memo, you'll see other requested updates, that ties from your memo, related to the project areas. So, as it related to sustainability and stormwater, as I mentioned, the stormwater projects are funded by the rates that go into the enterprise fund. We need to reassess the rate structure long-term. Currently, we're looking at how we can fund the debt service to continue the reinvestment within the current operating budget and then also look for grant opportunities. Let me pause there for a moment, 'cause I wanted to make sure that I was answering the intent of this question, 'cause it was a little broad and I didn't wanna miss something.
On the LED? NVRC, as you probably know, has negotiated new rates with Dominion that are in the VEPCA contract and they're low enough at this point that they're causing Fairfax County to do a rather wholesale change-out. And so, they calculated, we'll save the money. And so, I was just wondering if we had anybody who was able to look at that and maybe do some calculations as to whether or not an upfront expenditure would save, save the city money over time.
We have started that, we haven't completed it, so there's no project within the CIP before you, 'cause it would need the cost-benefit analysis, 'cause the savings will be in the operating budget, but we need to front it up.
Right.
In the capital.
Exactly.
As you know, Kate Walker was tracking that and is currently working part-time from UK, actually. She's our longest teleworker right now, but we are bringing.
Tara.
Tara on, who's one of our CIP operations engineers.
Yeah.
And so, she's getting oriented to that, so that we can look for that. So, we'll keep it on the radar screen, but there's nothing before you in the CIP. For the general fund, once again, this is an example of what's in tab three. These three summary sheets, I think, are used a lot, as the chair noted. It's where you can go to kinda see everything at a quick glance. The number I've circled is to give you a heads-up on the eight-point-five million that we have built into the CIP for public safety, public facilities and recreation and parks. Transportation is a standalone special fund now, so that we can leverage the other grant resources, so I just reinforce that for everybody. So, that's the total need. And then, under the funding sources, you can see that we have one-point-four million as PEGO and four-point-two in debt. That green slice of unfunded is an important one that we'll talk through on the project specifics, but that's where we haven't identified a funding source. So, the need is there, so everybody can see what the needs are, but we're still working to resolve that funding and so in the CIP before you, those are unfunded projects. That color coding is consistent in utilities, transportation, general fund and schools. And when I refer to general fund, it covers the schools as well. Just to make sure everybody is aware that the schools do not issue debt, so any school-related projects is on the general government side for CIP.
I'm sorry, where's this in the, in the?
That should be three dash two. So, three dash two will be your general fund summary that I have up on slide seventeen. Three dash one, I'll just call the attention to, it's towards the end of the slide, but since we're here, this is a request from the Planning Commission, hmm, chair maybe three, four years ago now, three dash one, where we put all the funding sources in one place, 'cause you had all the projects, but it was kinda hard to see all the PEGO and debt and so forth, so three dash one is another resource document for you. Now, what I'd like to do is do a little deeper dive in some of those projects and probably cover some of the details that you all were looking for and I will start with parks and The Rexon Park Advisory Board has reviewed the CIP that's before you, but they'll actually be meeting to adopt it this Wednesday, so if anything changes, I will advise you on the nineteenth. But this is something that the director had been working with them on. So, Fellows Parkland had four hundred thousand last year in the CIP and we've added two hundred thousand in order to cover all of the A and E and site plan work and the construction.
Has that transaction been finished?
No.
Yep.
It's still, it's final stages, but close. In council's last budget amendment, they increased by seven hundred thousand, the amount of funding needed to settle the eminent domain settlement. So, let me see, I think it's, yeah, my next slide is your requested update, as a follow-up to your January twenty-second memo, so I'll just note that this is the second park that's been added in thirty years. The last one was the Howarty Hermans Dream Valley Park. So, Rexon Park is very excited about this. As we know, it's designated as park and/or school in the future. There needs to be a master plan done for this and so, that is the intent, to start the community process for developing the master plan, which Rexon Park always holds two public hearings for that. At that point, that's when the questions about sidewalks, setbacks, amenities, along with the site plan, would be answered. So, couldn't answer yet specifics about your question about will sidewalks be included until this process unfolds? But we tried to make sure there was adequate funding in there and hence the reason for increasing it. There also needs to be a community discussion about the house. It needs to be assessed as to the condition, if it's being demoed, if it's being moved or what's gonna happen with it and that needs to go through the community process as well as the site plan. In the near term, once the city owns it, it will be secured and insured until that community process can unfold.
Is there any timeline on this, when this will be?
The.
Ours and we can get going on any plans?
The, it's anticipated the city will own it in the spring, probably April timeline and we will secure it. The funding would start in FY twenty for July one, to start the A and E. I think the Rexon Park Director's goal is to start the community engagement prior to the funding, if possible, to start getting a sense of what the community desires in the master plan. We will need the funding to do any design and site plan work.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a time in there when there's not, we own it, but no, nothing's being done with it.
Right. Yeah, so we'll need to secure it, whether it's with a fence or boarding up or whatever.
And securing, you know, with all the trees that will need to be cleared.
I was gonna say, they probably have to, yeah, they'll have to look at the trees and make sure all are safe and.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, once we own it, then we'll do a building and site assessment.
Okay.
Because the risk manager will need to insure it and I currently serve as the risk manager, so I will be very interested in it.
Right, right. And with the, the trees needing, you know.
Yeah.
Really big time care or removal.
And the house hasn't been attended to in a while.
Start our own firewood.
Does the house have historical significance or what?
It is not designated under any of the city, state or nationals and I'm, we are not sure fully about its condition. We're actually gonna have to have a structural assessment of it.
Probably doesn't need Energy Star, I suspect.
Yes, probably not. You know, it, it might be that it needs to become a police training site and then the fire department training site and then we'll.
Burn it down.
Demo it and haul off, but we can't make that assessment till we know what the building condition is and some community engagement.
Has anybody been inside that, that building?
Not for a very long time.
Wow.
And, you know, the owner was out of the house in a nursing home.
Any fun stuff in there?
For a long period of time, so.
Yeah.
Yep. So, that is progressing, but it's, we don't own it yet, so I can't take those next steps.
Thank God.
One of the other projects is the practice field lights that I mentioned. This would be up at the high school. It's planned for FY twenty-one, debt finance and that's time for the current schedule for the high school coming online and needing to make sure that all the fields are finalized. Two hundred thousand debt on the general government side and the school is committed to transferring two hundred thousand. They're not sure yet if it's from the high school bond-funded project or another funding source, depending on what fits into their costs when they get their designs. Turf field, sorry.
Just, if I may, so you're saying that absolutely the practice field lights are in the whole plan?
They're proposed in the CIP before you.
I would hate to have to say no to that and then go back and try to do it.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be prudent to design it now. So, right now, it fits into the debt financing plan and the superintendent has committed the school side.
It's absolutely necessary to be foolish not to do it.
The turf field replacements remain, as you saw them last year, so that we're planning for the ten-year end of life cycle, so that they get replaced. And park master plans have similar dollar amounts, as you've seen last year. What we did, however, instead of having six hundred thousand in FY twenty, which was challenging on the debt issuance for the city, but more importantly, on workload, we spaced it out, so there's a hundred and fifty thousand each year. That also works better for prioritization of Rexon Park staff, so they can work on trails and equipment at a more even pace, while keeping in mind that we have Big Chimneys happening, the turf and the Fellows and all these other projects. It was too bunched up and Rexon Park staff require public work staff to support them as will the planning staff be involved when we're talking about site plans and stuff? So, that's the difference there. The projects are the same and the funding is the same. The projects are the same and the funding is the same. Open space.
I'm so happy we got, are getting the fellows property though.
Open space remains a Rexon Park Advisory Board request of one million. It's currently in FY twenty-two, but it remains not funded due to lack of debt capacity. It's also one that you wouldn't issue debt until you had a location. But there's nothing appropriate, so we have a little bit of a chicken and egg. But since we just brought fellows on, we just provided some funding for open space. The second item on your requested update was the downtown park. I wasn't able to get ahold of the project manager. So I'll have additional details for you on the nineteenth for some specific timelines and budgets. But the scope has been scaled back to align with the budget. The EDA has concurred with proceeding with that scale back. They're still funding it. It's basically going to work within the existing footprint. For watch night, the ADA sidewalk was repaired. The seating and the brick walls have been repaired. Dead trees were removed. And so now it'll be lighting, seating, and finishing out the area. No loss of parking.
I was just going to jump in on the schedule for the downtown plaza. The intent, I think, is to, to have it open for Arbor Day. End of April, sorry.
Why Arbor Day?
The thought being that that might be a place to celebrate Tree City USA.
Okay, after we've, after we took most of the trees out.
We got one.
We have one.
Hey, hey, we got.
And I guess we might, are we putting any new trees in?
I, I think the landscaping plan is still being developed, yeah.
Yeah.
But now we got another one tree box.
Could be a place for the annual neighborhood tree planting that day.
Yeah, neighborhood tree in.
But they are targeting the spring, but we'll provide some more details.
Finally.
General government facilities. I've kept the pictures in there just as a reminder of how many facilities the city does have and maintain, although we tend to think of some of our big ones only. So some deep dive on the facility reinvestment. On the general government side, there's two point seven million that's been identified and requested over the ten-year period. Our public work staff have gone through every building and have itemized roofs, HVAC stairs, whatever replacements. So this is budgeted based on assessment. We do have two hundred thousand dollars a year available, and so that's been funded. It leaves six and a quarter unfunded. It's manageable. It's not ideal, but with limited pay-gos, it's manageable and they'll just prioritize. They, and every year, they leave twenty-five to fifty thousand sort of not allocated for those emergencies that come up on facilities. These type of things, as I mentioned earlier, need to be done with pay-go. They are not ones that you can issue debt on. So this is a really important piece to maintain in the general government. And working with the schools, they had submitted, oh, I meant, I'm not to schools yet. Let me hold that. Public facility security system I mentioned before. This is to take all the other eight buildings and get the card access programs and the cameras and the alarms as we have at City Hall when we reopen. The library is partially done now, but this would allow us to do all of our facilities. Fire station six, our ongoing discussion.
Finally.
Finally, they have the procurement done for the HVAC and they will be doing phase one in the spring. They couldn't get it done before winter and we couldn't take the HVAC down on the fire station in the winter. They are going to do the upper floor as phase one. So that's where the kitchen, the rental space, the bathrooms are. So temporarily, we're working with the volunteers because they will need to be relocated or they know this is coming and they will not have the rental space and some income for a short period of time. Then in FY twenty, at the beginning, they will do the lower level. The reason it's not going to be fully done in nineteen is they need some of the FY twenty money to finish out the VAS system and some of the energy efficiency because they'll be going to a VRF system. So by.
Just to be clear, are they, I mean, so they're going to not be able to space, are they actually having to re-vent it? I mean, it's not just like, I mean.
For the, for the HVAC, they're basically gutting all the HVAC, so they need all the ceilings.
Oh, they're taking all of it out completely.
Yeah, they're switching it from the little residential HVAC units that are all over and undersized to a good full VRF system.
Oh, okay.
So be properly sized for a twenty-four by seven type facility and also much more energy.
Yeah, I guess I just didn't conceive of having to take everything out.
Right, right.
They're also going to use that rental space for some storage because they needed some staging areas, so they're not taking the bays up. So, yeah.
Somebody should write a paper of lessons learned on that.
They do think it's will be three months or less because they're going to do it by floor and just go in there and do it. And then they'll work the first floor where the careers and the staffs are in the bays and replace the heater units over the doors that are always breaking with the current doors. So by halfway through FY twenty, the HVAC units should be finally done. And we did celebrate last year the windows getting done. They have continued to budget in the out-years a hundred and fifty thousand for boiler, generator, and sewer projects. But they did put in a increased ask for the door replacements. And you'll see that on three dash two tab for the fire station. FY twenty-one is five hundred and fifty thousand. That's all ten doors at once at about fifty-five thousand apiece because they're going to the bi-fold doors. And in your tab five, I've included Arlington's backup on their cost-benefit analysis for these type of doors, which have much lower maintenance and more durability, just more upfront cost on the capital. So the CIP recommends that we do it all at once because there's five doors in the front, five doors in the back. And it's really hard to parse the doors for efficiency, economy of scale, and just the look of the fire station. But to do that, I've then taken FY twenty-two and twenty-three and show them as unfunded. So we're basically fronting the a hundred and fifty thousand per agreement with Arlington. And then I did show it as unfunded because Arlington has documented needs for boilers and generators, but I think it'll be manageable. Because the priorities have been the HVAC and the doors. I, I think Arlington facility staff is starting to get a good handle on this and we're finally progressing. Under the requested update memo, I've touched base now on fire station six. It'll be spring and fall work because of the, taking the HVAC down. Also, the spring work will not happen until we have dispatch back at City Hall because they've been operating out of fire stations. So we can't take that down for phase two till they're out. It will still remain a backup, secondary site in case of emergencies, but will be fine during the HVAC. City Hall, all right. So initially, the substantial completion was January nineteenth. We are looking at about a two-month delay. So we are looking at furniture currently arriving and being installed. Just all the systems, furniture, and desks between February eighteenth and the end of February, beginning of March. Working on fine-tuning the schedules with staff. But we're looking for a mid-March move back into City Hall with the core level of services that will tie with the lease space at four hundred North Washington terminating at March thirty-first. And as part of that, we'll also then sequence the staff at Gage House, the property yard, dispatch at the fire station. And then we also have detectives at four fifty West Broad. So we're, the scattered offices will come back. So we are hopeful by middle to end of April, we will be fully in condition, having all the kinks out so boards and commissions can come back home, courts can come back, magistrate all those functions that are at Arlington or at the Flower Building. There was a question in that memo about what kind of delays, costs are from these delays. Right now, it is predominantly the off-site storage and temporary office spaces that we're having to do. There are additional costs to the projects because we have found unforeseen items. Leaking walls, a steel beam that was cracked that couldn't be identified until uncovered. A structural wall that we didn't know was structural that was supposed to be removed. We had to put a new T-beam in. So those items and weather have been coming out of the C Mar contingency and the owner's contingency. So we're still working the budget.
So what's the new, I heard about the move back. What's the new substantial completion? When you say two months, are we?
Yeah, we're still actually negotiating that with Hit back and forth on their schedule. So I don't have the contract substantial completion date yet. On the practical side, we're working to get us back in there because the lease ends March thirty-first. And the new building owner is moving his headquarters in there. So there's less flexibility as I had with the previous owner.
Sure.
You know, if I might ask, we originally, in the original plans, the, the garage for the police was going to be rectangular or square. And now I guess it's a triangle?
It's a square with a, one side cut off, so it's not quite a triangle either. That was to accommodate pedestrian access and keep the drive aisle wide enough.
But we'll still have enough space for the police cars.
So they still have twenty-five spaces. There are tandem parking. We still have bike storage. That sort of cutoff angle side by the West Drive is actually where the generator room is. So it worked out fine to create a room for the generator because the building will be generated.
And the charge stations?
They're coming. We did find a, so we got two in the front, the rest in the rear. And the little hiccup we had has now been resolved because we didn't know where the transformer was going to go because it wouldn't fit into the mechanical room because it hadn't been planned for that. But it's in the garage, safe and sound. And our vendors are happy with the transformer location. So we are still on track for the EV charging stations.
You said two out front?
Two out front, front of the West.
Okay, I thought they were in before for the public.
I think it's only two conduits in the front, but the rest can be, depending on how, because there's parking behind the garage that we haven't designated to.
Publicly accessible?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's sort of where we are in City Hall. There'll be a lot more details coming. We're actually starting to meet with movers tomorrow and getting a lot of those logistics teed up. And we're having an internal staff meeting to plan for when boards and commissions are coming back, ribbon cutting, and unveiling of the cornerstone, some of those very exciting end-of-project details. Library was another item that you had in your January twenty-second memo. So just as a quick highlight, they did get the thirty-five percent, thirty-five percent design plans in last week. They are meeting last week and this week on the cost, looking at scope tied to budget. So that's still in process. I don't have anything definitive on that yet. It'll take a couple of weeks to work through that. Our project manager for that project, as well as downtown park, is, last day with the city is February thirteenth. She's going back to Fairfax County. So we have brought on Markon as our owner rep. And so they'll be taking over to manage this project so we can keep it on schedule and on budget. There was a question about the application of the Founder's Row VCs. And that's also being reviewed both by the library board of trustees request and staff as to how it would apply within the budget. And that's mostly not decided yet because we just got the cost estimates installed. Just assessing what the needs are, the adults and so forth. Application of the VCs would require council action because it'd have to be appropriated in the budget. They've already acted on Founder's Row, but it would actually have to be appropriated so it could be expended. So before I leave that slide, did I answer the questions or the intent of the questions in your memo on these items? Okay.
Sounds like it.
Schools. The school board adopted on December eleventh. When they submitted it, they had identified something for Mary Ellen Henderson, something for Jesse Thackeray, the high school. But that was just for the timeline because the money's already appropriated. But I put a note on the bottom of this slide just to remind everybody that a hundred and seventeen million is in the CIP. It just doesn't show up here because it's already been appropriated. TJ's expansion is the same as you saw last year. It's in the out-year, so it's actually in year seven. But it's a marker because they may need that to expand to handle Mount Daniels enrollment if it grows and since we're cap with Fairfax County. So nothing changed with that one. And working with the school staff on what they were asking for for Mary Ellen Henderson in terms of security and flooring, most of the flooring there is not surviving. It's just was not adequate quality. But then when the areas are going to tie to the new high school, now we have construction and flooring that is incompatible and needs to blend. So they put in that project. And also Jesse Thackeray seems to have an HVAC system that was overdesigned. And so it cuts off too quick and it's not taking the humidifier out. So it's not dehumidifying properly. And we are having air quality problems and mold that needs to be addressed. All of those items, however, are not debt-financed. So they need to be pay-go funding. So I worked with the school staff to create a facility reinvestment project similar to what we have on the general government so that we're looking every year at funding. Also, if it's in one project, if the Jesse Thackeray dehumidifier comes in a little lower, you can use that money for another project because it's in the same project without having to go back to council and amend it to move it. So it allows for much more flexibility to manage your facilities. It is showing, as I mentioned, in the CIP as unfunded because it's a need, but it didn't have a pay-go funding source. I am hoping between now and when council adopts budget, but unfortunately, probably not before you take action on the nineteenth, that revenue can come up. We get the revenue sharing agreement. We can somehow get away for lease the first year funded because Jesse Thackeray preschool needs to be addressed.
Cindy, how was the funding handled for the, the two times the gym floor was ruined?
Insurance.
Insurance.
They filed it with the BML insurance program. Now, when this general government set up our facility reinvestment fund, we took one year and took two hundred thousand from the operating budget and shifted it to the capital. So that's an open discussion with the school board as well as to whether they could do that or if we have increased revenue. And as part of the revenue sharing, they could dedicate it to that so that we can get that funded. Because once it's in the tax rate and the base, then it's an outcome.
And another thing about flooring, that when you, you know, down, downsize or down-cost of different materials, it always comes back and bites us.
Indeed. The security at Mary Ellen Henderson would actually create a vestibule so it'll have a secure outside area and will be parallel to the high school security.
Okay, because I've asked about that before and they seem to think that the security was just fine. But I think we need some improvements.
Yeah, I would say the school administration feels it needs to be addressed and have submitted a CIP project.
A lot of the furniture up there, you know, the built-in furniture is really not of good quality.
That definitely is not CIP, so they will have to address that in their operating budget. And the final note on here is because the, the CIP that is before you has changed significantly. School board staff will be taking it back to the school board on February twelfth. So I will have the school board's action before you all take action on the nineteenth. Transportation. So in tab eight, all the transportation projects are outlined. The Spickets, which I just love this graphic, with some thanks from my planning staff to help create it. It's a great visualization and it's also in your notebook to talk about how every dollar of local funding leverages four to ten using our state and federal. And so many of those grants on that left side you could see don't require a match. It's a lot of hard work, but it's a great resource. For transportation, and these are just excerpts from tab three for the transportation summary, which I believe is three dash three. That one I spent a lot of time with. Tab three dash three, and I might ask if you all could turn to that because I want to point out something that's a little different on this summary sheet than the others. And that is on, all of the projects are actually coordinated in programs because it gives us much more flexibility. If we have a pavement. If we have a pavement program and then within one year, we may do this street or that street, but the money is all within that program and allows us to have a little more flexibility if something's over or under budget and not go back to council. It also allows us to group them by POAs. So we have South Washington, Downtown, North Washington, for example. So it allows us to do a targeted focus on POA implementation. So you do see several lines for infrastructure of South Washington. And that's because the second column from the left on tab three dash three provides the funding sources. One, I think that's helpful for you all to see the diversity of the grants and the projects we're going for. But it is also how we track what's grant funded, what needs debt, and what is pay-go. So on the slide, you can see we have nine point eight million of pay-go and it's leveraging forty-seven million dollars in this six-year CIP. Uh, the six-year CIP for transportation is fifty-nine and a half million. Um, in the sixth year, there's no more unfunded. And we have some unfunded in the ten-year horizon. So looking at the ten-year horizon on the next slide, it's really important that we look at that um, horizon, flesh out what we need, really look at implementing the adopted plans. And that allows us to pursue grants and other funding opportunities. So it can give one quite a shock, but you take that six-year total of fifty-nine million, add things that are in um, just three of the um, program areas, and you're up to a hundred thirty-six million. But what that identifies is there's sixty-four million dollars of needs in the adopted plans that we can now target funding and space the workload in the projects. And on the left is just an excerpt of the planning's webpage for where all the comp plan and area plans are for the public.
Way to know which of our local streets are up for repaving?
Um, yes.
Because I get a lot of questions, particularly about Oak.
Yeah, I'll check with the director because that's out of the operating budget. And they'll be doing the reassessment of road and scoring them. Um, and I'll see if they have the list or when it'll be.
Because that's pretty bad. Not the stuff in front of schools because they did that.
Yeah, well, and then there's always challenges where our utilities come in and make a mess of the road and we have to go after them to restore.
Yeah, around TJ.
This uh, graphic is also in your tab eight to remind us of the constant transportation uh, cycle. It applies to a lot of the other facility programs at the broad level, but this one, it's just much more significant because of our granddaughter. So we definitely start with those comp plan, area plans, project scoping, go for the grants. This is where the pre-scoping um, funding is really vital. And then we get into the design, construction, and the ribbon cutting and start the cycle over. And of course, with all the projects you've seen, we are actually doing this concurrently in many arenas. So this is a slide that you've seen last year. I kept it in here for continuity and knowledge for the public. But we do have the program areas that are implementing the area plans, the master plans. It allows us to focus on a wide range of transportation, bridges, signals, roadway, neighborhood traffic calming, accessibility and pedestrian, which would include transit, and then the West Falls Church Economic Development. Um, we do try to do, work with the PMs that they start with the project and finish it. It has been a little more challenging now because we've had a fair amount of staff turnover um, with staff going to Arlington, Fairfax, and Womata um, many times for salaries. So as a side note, we're doing some HR analysis on that. Uh, with all the grants that we've talked about, it gives us a lot of complexities on administering, reimbursing federal requirements for right-of-way, for et cetera. So uh, we have to watch the workload, not just on the project management side, but also to make sure we can manage these grants and comply and do the contract procurement.
Cindy, has there been any extra costs to the city from uh, Womata doing more stops along Broad? I think I read somewhere that they're adding stops for-
Well, as, do you know which route they're adding? We have, we'll have to research that specific thing. We do have the three T operating, which is being funded with our MBTC grant. But when we're looking at their operating budget, they are trying to increase services in certain areas. And DC wants longer hours at night and so forth, so that translates to operating costs. Our share is a complex formula for rail versus bus and ridership. And so um, that's why actually three percent-
It seemed a surprise to me when I read it.
We'll have to, Paul, have you heard anything particular about broad increase?
No, I, just to clarify the question, is it about the number of bus stops or the, 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 the time during the day that the service is running?
I think a little bit of both, you know, it just seemed like they're adding more so that even the, even the school kids could use more of it along the way.
Any stops?
Huh?
Any more stops?
Or more buses?
Yeah. It just seemed like more stops being added or something. I've read it in the news press, but you know.
I mean, you'd certainly look into it.
Okay.
And we'll definitely-
Because it's been so hard to get anything ushered out of, you know, particularly when they took the one line away.
Yep, three Ts, three Ts back for two years.
Yep.
As we assess this utilization and pursue additional funding. Uh, this slide summarizes a bit of some of the changes to the CIP since you saw it last year. No new projects in the first three years. But because we haven't added in the front and we're pacing better to complete and manage projects, we actually created some out-year capacity for funding and staff. And so that you'll start seeing some additional funding in the, projects in the out-year. Uh, we created the project and grant development fund. That's on tab three dash three. Um, it's the very last one. You'll see a hundred thousand every year. And that's in pay-go, which gives us the flexibility to manage um, those type of um, design issues. Last year, there was one point two million in pavement for Great Falls reconstruction unfunded. It's now funded in FY twenty-five. It's half debt and half grant money. So while it's in an out-year, it's actually funded versus in a near-term year and not funded, which means we're really not doing it. There's also five hundred thousand in FY twenty-two that could be used to leverage a parking structure partnership. Uh, for example, if one could, arrangement could be worked out with Kaiser or something in the city-owned land behind uh, Clarence Dawkins and, uh, not Clarence Dawkins, um, Dogwood. Somewhere in those area POAs, there might be an opportunity. So um, we've now been able to propose funding for that. The increased funding for neighborhood traffic calming is a very important one um, that we work to do. As you all know, in FY twenty, we have six hundred thirty-six thousand in grant money. That was in the CIP last year. That's been awarded. We've applied for an additional eight hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-two. Those are federal funds, so they need to go for the heavier uh, type projects, the heavier solutions. Um, Jeff is currently working through the um, FY nineteen money on some projects that I'll touch base on in a minute. But we wanted to make sure in the out-years, we were regularly reinvesting in the neighborhood traffic calming. So those two big grants can carry us for a couple of years to implement. And then we're targeting in twenty-four and twenty-five, two hundred thousand each of pay-go and then a hundred thousand in the out-year so that we can regularly have built into the tax base a commitment to NTC. The sixty-four million dollars that I mentioned earlier in the four out-years of uh, identifying needs to pursue for grants are coming from the West Broad Street POA, multimodal accessibility in North Washington. So you can see the dollar amounts that were in the adopted plans with the seven percent escalation since it's been a while since those were adopted.
This is the target date for that multimodal, modal.
Great segue to the next slide because in your, perfect. In your memo, you did ask about South Washington.
And everything?
Yep.
Oh, my gosh.
So um, undergrounding PE and right-of-way for South Washington multimodal is done. And we did repave the roads sooner than the end of the project just because the utility undergrounding uh, was so destructive. The invitation for bid procurement document for construction is being finalized by staff. And then it requires VDOT approval due to our funding sources. That can take VDOT anywhere from ninety to days to six months. So it'll take us a while to get through that process. We have concurrently applied for an additional two million dollars of smart scale funding, which would be approved by the Commonwealth Transportation Board in June. Um, it looks very favorable. Staff has heard we're ranked number three in NOVA, so it does look like we're um, likely to get that. That grant money is necessary to finish the project because of the duration it's taken us. Costs have escalated and the right-of-way acquisition and uh, uh, utility undergrounding was significantly higher than the original estimates. The IFB will include the historic Transit Plaza panels. So that's the update as of today for South Washington multimodal. We are still a couple of years out for total completion. Historic panels at the Transit Plaza. So we're going to have eight panels that are glass and engraved. And we've worked with a community group to tell the history of the city. It does include some transit components since FTA is funding it. So we got the balloons, the trains, and the horses, rolling road. Um, Downtown Park Avenue Street, Great Street was another ask. Um, that is from State Theater to the library. Originally approved grant is for two million. As we get into the cost estimating and the utility undergrounding, it was going to be much higher. This is a good example of where that pre-scoping resources would have been helpful. However, in the meantime, VDOT has offered up some of their own state money. We've been improving our partnership and they're going to do the pre-scoping and help us get a better sense um, because they want us to succeed with the smart scale because it will also be better for them not to have a failed project. So once we get the pre-scoping, we'll be able to um, assess the next steps. And then West Broad Street pedestrian crossing, these are our hawk signals at three intersections. The design um, is well underway. Uh, the project manager uh, has just received the thirty percent design plans and should have the cost estimate next week. Preliminary, it looks like we're in budget, so I'm very excited about that. And this would um, be Fairfax and East Broad, Cherry and East Broad, and West Broad and Lee. Am I remembering correct, Paul?
Yeah, Fairfax, Berry, and uh, Oak.
Oak, thank you. That was one intersection off. So um, and those will be hawk signals and improved pedestrian crossings. Very important for safety and accessibility. Neighborhood traffic calming, the full report that Jeff Psych has provided to council and the CACT is in tab eight um, for easy reference for you. The two projects he's actively working with current funding is Great Falls and Little Falls. And he'll be having a resident follow-up meeting in February, targeting light solutions in spring. And in Dale and Gundry, there'll be a meeting with the residents in March. That one, we've done some things, just light solutions, but it's going to need to be heavier solutions to handle the traffic calming in that area. And we want to coordinate that with Big Chimneys in the entrance as well. Uh, there are other petitions and things outstanding that he continues to work. Uh, WNOD dual trails and crossings was another ask from your memo. So Jeff is also working that one with the crossings. The thirty percent design plans will be due uh, end of February. This project's being coordinated with Nova Parks for the crossings, but also the dual trails, which is their project um, that Jeff and Paul have been tracking and working. And that's one where Nova Parks got MBTA seventy percent funding, but they can't be a direct recipient. So the city is being the fiscal agent for that. So it's technically in our CIP for FY nineteen. It was amended, but um, it's their project. Paul, is there anything you would want to add to either of those?
Uh, just to clarify, that the dual trails effort by Nova Parks will require a site plan. Uh, it could be done with an administrative approval. But my expectation would be to have at least one work session with the planning commission so that you all can see what's going on. It would be a taped session that the community can see it as well. Uh, we've also talked to staff about perhaps holding uh, uh, some of these sessions at the Citizens Advisory Committee on Transportation, the CACT, so that there is a broad range of inputs. Obviously, this, this project has been uh, talked about for uh, some time. It's actually getting the money to implement it is a um, big step forward for the city and making sure that everybody knows what's going to go in before um, the shovels show up is a good thing.
I saw someone get hit today, so this project cannot come soon enough. He'd like brushed it off and after yelling at the person, moved on on the Great Falls.
On a bike or?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, he didn't get injured, but anyway, these crossings are in desperate need. I don't know. It hit the bike, so he was okay. I'm just, my point is it's- This is well overdue.
But I think that's uh, very valid. It's a, it's a significant safety issue. So it's progressing for sure. Uh, West Falls Church Economic Development, um, sort of in transition. We had this grant as pending when we had the CIP before you last year. So just, we made a big PR about it, but just to kind of close the loop officially, we did receive five, fifteen point seven million dollars of MBTA, seventy percent to help with the infrastructure and accessibility up by our ten acres. And so that's a very significant um, grant. It is in your CIP twenty-one to twenty-three. So when it was awarded, it was spread out over multiple years. And now that we're getting closer to design, we'll have to assess that timing. It will be a major project and workload, so we're looking at whether the developer could manage the project for us. A little complex because of the funding source or whether we might elect to use an owner rep if we don't have in-house staff resources. Policy. So uh, tab two has all the financial policies and this information in more detail. So just as a highlight, um, this is general fund in schools for one year. And I just wanted to call out the amount of purple, which is transportation. You will see a theme as how significant our transportation CIP is. And that is because of working the grants and not having to depend on uh, local tax dollars. So very exciting. And even when you take that out for the six years, the purple pie is still big. Uh, and then when you add in utilities, um, the purple pie is still big. Little over half of it, but it is still a significant part. Uh, but this gives you a good view of all of the components of the CIP that's before you. This is the summary chart that I was referring to in tab three. And so just in one place, you can see um, all of the funds and the years so that you can see our significant transportation dollars, but, and uh, facilities, but also the utility. So the CIP part of the general, of the budget is significant. We spent a lot of time thinking about the operating budget, but the CIP is double the actual operating budget in terms of dollar. Um, as I mentioned, the financial policies were updated in February two thousand eighteen. The CIP before you fully complies with these new policies. They did need to be amended so that we could handle that once in a generation debt issuance of a high school. So we're now using available fund balance instead of unassigned. And it can be twenty percent of the expenditures during this period. So in the past, we were looking at uh, seventeen percent. So it can go up to twenty, but you have to have more fund balance. So the red line shows the minimum threshold we have to maintain. It is higher right now in our projections, but that's to be, because we have reserves set aside to handle the high school debt service. And we haven't totally inked the deal yet, so on the conservative level, we've maintained the fund balance. The red line is the new policy limit. Um, this one shows the debt service as a percentage of those expenditures. This is a little bit more what you're used to seeing. Um, but instead of twelve percent, it's, uh, we can go up to fifteen percent under the new policies because of the high- it's, we can go up to 15% under the new policies because of the high school. So the blue line on the bottom is the existing CIP before the adoption of what's before you. To, the red would be the new. So you can see we go up to the cap. The purple is the new cap. A lot of that does also include debt issuance for transportation in Womata. But it shows that we're still within policy even with what's proposed before you. In your tab three, you have this chart. It shows the policy compliance and numbers. So if you prefer to look at its numbers versus pictorial graphs, you have that as an option.
Yeah, is the, the feeling that once we get through the high school, will we redo the percentage and take it right back down to a 12% policy?
Yeah. So the, the financial policy won't need to be updated because there is clauses in there as to how long you can stay at that 15 and 20, and then you have to revert back to your standard. So it's just an, sort of an exception base. And then we'll get back to more what you all are used to. So as I wrap up, I just wanna close with a reminder of our council vision and the core values that the CIP before you is tied to. The notebook, we've kind of touched base on the framework. Your next meeting's the 19th, which I plan to be back. That would be your official public hearing, and thanks to Shayna for helping with the advertisement. That would be when I ask for your recommendation and action. We'll forward that to the city manager for inclusion in his budget and adoption by council in April. This is the standard website information and how to contact me if you have additional questions. And with that, I am open for questions in the compasses, so you can give me some direction.
Cindy, where in this, and I might have just missed it when you were talking, but with all the planned dealings with infrastructure up around the hot, new high school, how is that fitting into things? And when will that start being heard and looked at?
We're currently already working on the sewer and the sanitary, and we need to do capacity in 2021 with Fairfax County. We're at least appropriating it so that we can reserve our share of capacity increase.
Also interested in the transportation side up there.
Yeah. And so that's where we have the 15.7...
Yeah, right.
Money. That'll be the biggest investment, and we also have an MBTC grant.
Will that come back through the planning commission at all, or?
Yeah, I think that a lot of the transportation changes would be included as part of the conceptual development plan and then ultimately the site plan, which you guys have a advisory role on both of those items.
Because that's gotta be somehow coordinated with the building of the high school.
Yes.
And, you know, can't have one without the other.
Correct. There was a staff level meeting about the importance of the elevation of the two sites matching where they need to be.
Yeah, be handed.
Yeah. So we're, for in here, we're trying to make sure we have adequate funding for those issues. It will be that parallel track of work in the project and site plans and agreements with the developer.
There are, at the staff level, there are infrastructure meetings that occur every other week, and so that's exactly where these issues of high school development and 10 acre development are getting hashed out on things like utility connections, grade connections, timing of when facilities need to be available, when they can be shut off, how things need to be routed, making sure that solutions work for everybody to move forward together.
And what company's handling that?
For the high school team?
Yeah, the trans, for all the road work and everything that has to be done.
That would be handled by their general contractor, their builder.
Yep. Who hasn't been selected yet.
Oh, okay.
They're not at that stage.
Okay, 'cause I hadn't heard anything about it. This is lots of coordination to do, that's for sure.
Yeah, the next time the, the planning commission will see the high school, I believe, will be at their, tentatively at their next meeting on February 19th. And so that'd be an opportunity to look at some of that planning at the edges, which is right always the hard thing.
Because that'll be a mess too, up there, you know, getting around it, wouldn't it?
It's gonna be very, very complex. And, you know, we talked about sewer, stormwater, and transportation for that coordination, and then we'll have the parks, for example, with the lights. And so that's why managing workload on this CIP was really important.
Yeah.
Some big CIPs.
On slide 33, you talk about the Womata expense increases. Is this the local subsidy you're referring to? Why would that be in the CIP? It's for operating?
Yeah, we, we've, and let me see if I can get the page number for you so we can look at it. We made, there's a fair amount of capital, but the operating is here, and we made a strategic decision to do that. And it'll be tab eight. And where's Womata? Eight dash nine.
Nine?
Eight dash nine, yeah. And this is only the local portion of the Womata. And there's transportation trust funds, sales tax, and gas tax that we also get through MBTC. We've made the decision so that it's transparent to the community, that they see it all in one place, put the operating in with the CIP. So all the way through the presentation until final budget adoption, it'll show in the CIP. When we actually do the ordinance, we'll split it between operating and capital. Just so everybody can see the complexity in one place.
Even though they're for operating expenses instead of...
Yeah. But there, it's a, there is a fair amount of capital here, so both capital and operating.
Several times you refer to the, to memo of January 22nd. Is that something, I'm sorry, have we seen, is that something that was circulated?
That was the staff report, maybe that's a better term, that Shayna and Paul sent me. But I did the excerpt, is the priority focus?
Yeah, the priority questions that the planning commission developed over the last couple of meetings. You'll see it on the staff report in your packet online, s125 through 144.
So I excerpted from the outcome from the planning commission meeting that was forwarded to me by Mr. Stoddard and just put it here. So I took these as questions and where you wanted to focus, and that's what I put into the slides. So if you saw the slide, "update requested," it was in response to these items.
I just had one question on the, actually, it's on the next page 34. At the bottom, it talks about the North Washington POA, 43.2 million. I'm just curious what that, generally speaking, it's transportation, but I'm just like a trolley line.
Do you know, lessen the POA off the top of your head while I flip to the page?
Yeah, while you're looking up the page, I think there was a grant application last year, which was ultimately not successful, but that included multimodal improvements, I think along the great length of the corridor, wider sidewalks, consistent street lighting, installation of street trees, better pedestrian crossings, bus shelters where they're missing. There are also other improvements that are called for in North Washington POA. Some of them live in the stormwater section, for example, the remake of Four Mile Run.
Yeah, that's what's wrong.
Right, but this is transportation, right?
I was looking for North Washington.
Eight dash eight.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a...
Yeah, I'm just...
Oh, that's wait, that's West Broad.
I just put the notebook together today, so I haven't gotten my cheat sheet on the... While I'm looking for that, I'll just call out eight dash 11 because that's a, even a deeper dive on the Womata funding, if you wanted to look at that.
Approval of that project.
All right. Sorry about that.
Okay, South Washington, no, not North.
Is it missing? That would not be good if I'm missing a page.
Stuff going on all over the place.
If I don't see North Washington.
I may be providing you all a replacement page, which is why we do three day, three whole pages.
Yeah, we'll miss the North Washington page, yeah.
Well, there's a, I think there's some, because on 33, the $43 million project is listed here as West Broad POA.
All right, so I may have them reversed.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure, that's a lot of money for North Washington.
Yeah.
The last update to the North Washington sheet was in last year's CIP, and that included 14 and a half million dollars for multimodal improvements, including a remake of the Washington Aggression Intersection, Washington and Jefferson, and then, as I said, multimodaling improvements at Quamor Corridor.
So what I will do is get you all the page and make sure I didn't cross the POAs off the other summary sheet. And I will make sure I'm clear on that for your next meeting.
So just make sure I understand, the issue is with the slide here? Because in the book, it looks like it's listed as the West Broad POA for 43, and on eight dash eight, it also says 43.
Yeah, I think...
It's just on this slide where I see it as North Washington.
Yeah, it just caught my attention that that was a lot of money for North Washington.
It is. I think you're right.
Yeah.
I think it's just here. That, that there's not a page missing. It's just mislabeled on the slide 34.
So I'll correct that before posting, but make sure it's in the notebook.
Could be that whole corner up there.
It's good for extra pair of eyes. And then, as I was mentioning, as we went through that, eight dash 11 has some more details on the Womata funding with all the other sources as well. More than you may wanna know.
Any other questions? So I don't have that, I don't really have a question. I guess it's more of a comment. When I look at 2020, it looks like there's very little flexibility in terms of, you know, our, we're always supposed to provide guidance and review and perhaps have an opportunity to make suggestions about how else to spend the money. But for 2020, it looks like it's really tied up overwhelmingly in the transportation or the, the purple portion of the pie. And based on the leverage there, it seems like a really bad place to start making cuts on. But other than that, it just looks like, you know, a few dollars for public safety, which is not, 150,000 for public safety. There's some unfunded stuff and pay-as-you-go in the public facilities, and then again, another 150 in the recreation and parks, which is debt financed. And then we're in transportation, so I'm just not sure, you know, what guidance we're gonna be able to provide in the first year. After that, you know, we have, I guess, some flexibility to say we wanna make some changes or... But it looks pretty limited here in 2020.
And that is because of the high school, the library, and completing City Hall. So it's just the timing of the next year.
Yeah. No, I think these, these charts, while not misleading, just as you footnote, there's things that are prior, are funded in prior years that impact 2020 quite wildly or significantly wildly, is not the right word. But anyway, as a result, I think the questions I have are somewhat limited. But just having gotten this this evening, take a look and... Typically, we come prepared on the 19, or the next meeting with any additional questions because we're also slated to take some action. Is there a way you'd like to see questions in advance? Or is there a way that we can make this more efficient if there are some suggestions or questions we would like to discuss?
Questions in advance would be welcome this year because of tight schedules and your all's workload. We didn't squeeze in another work session. So if you have some in advance, that would be great, and maybe they could be funneled to me through the planning director, and I'll have my hotspot next time. So if you need to do this Excel spreadsheet on the spot, we can make some changes and see impact. But it's always easier to make sure I don't do a formula mix to do it in advance.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's to accommodate our, our busy schedule, which I appreciate, but also I think that we understood what was coming before us and as a result, didn't need an additional bunch of presentations and wasting of your time. So if there are questions, I guess we forward them over to Paul, and we can get him over to Ms. Mester in advance.
Yeah, go ahead.
Looking at the, almost the last page in this document, that I, you know, I just happened to start looking at. There's all kinds of questions that were asked by the planning commission about the CIP, and they're all there, but will we eventually hear answers to those?
Yeah, any slide in the presentation that's labeled "requested update" is in response to those questions.
Okay, right.
Got it. My thought would be, depending on if you had any more, any more in depth, that I can incor, incorporate the responses in the staff report that comes back to you for the official 19th.
Just to clarify, I guess, the question. So there is in your staff report a draft motion for the next planning commission meeting. Normally, materials would be distributed a week in advance of your meeting, which would be next Monday. I guess the question is, does the planning commission need to have additional information? Or is the planning commission gonna recommend any changes? Or is this motion and the CIP as presented in its draft form ready for planning commission action?
I think it's a, I mean, I don't know what is gonna change, but, I mean, I, we just got this material today. I think it's, while I don't suspect many changes, I think it's premature not to give us an opportunity to read it and assess it. This was not, you know, one of the things provided in advance, so... I haven't read through these tabs. I'm pretty familiar with this process, but I don't wanna speak before reviewing it.
Right.
But...
Lot of information.
That's why I'm saying in the next week, try to get some questions if we have them so that we can, you know, be pretty, pretty prepared to address this motion next meeting. But I, so I don't really know.
Fair enough. Yeah, any, any questions, I will, of course, forward them. And we can include, I guess, it may be helpful for the entire group. If you guys want, I can, I can be forwarding out to the entire group the questions that come in. Obviously, the group member should not be emailing amongst themselves to be considerate of open meeting laws. But if folks like, I can be popping the questions out to the entire group so that...
I think that's great. I don't think we're gonna have that many questions, to be honest. But if we get some questions and you guys notice something, it'd be great if you distributed them.
Yeah, maybe we'll do an end of the day digest so that if one day sees three or four questions, I'll send them all this one.
Well, you never know what you get in the book.
That's true.
I might get some over, over...
No, it does not need to be instantaneous feedback.
For those of you that did this previously, you'll see the project sheets look very similar. And like you said, there's not a lot of opportunity for 20, but we did try to flesh out that 10-year horizon. So if there's some questions or things you see that you'd like to shift or prioritize, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm sort of saying that matter-of-factly, it's not actually a criticism. The projects we're doing are tremendous and exciting for the city, and we've been talking about for those for a decade as well. It just so happens in 2020, there's not much flexibility as a result. So I don't expect this process to be as complicated as it has been in the past.
Hopefully, we can complicate it in the future. That means there's flexibility, not complexities.
We'll have more decisions to make. But we've made huge decisions in terms of the high school and the library and City Hall and things like that.
Yep.
This year, we get an easy CIP to review. So Ms. Mester, thank you very much, and we'll send you some questions. We have them. Otherwise, we'll see you in two weeks.
Perfect. And I will tee up a staff report, and if we tweak it that day, we'll be prepared to do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the public thanks you for this detailed slide presentation. Quite impressive. All right, we are mostly on schedule. We are going to deal with the transfer of development rights as our final issue of the day.
So this is the final item on your agenda tonight. This is a work session item. I'll briefly describe the item, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Shayna Schaefer, who did some really excellent work to pull this together for your review and discussion. So as I... So as I said, this is a work session item. And the request of the planning commission is for you all to review the proposal, engage in a conversation. And there are three questions in particular that staff is hoping to get answered as part of this. And those are listed on lines nine through thirteen of the staff report. And they are, one, does the proposal preserve and expand the right set of community assets, including open space, floodplains and historic structures? Number two, what are the right receiving zones for the transfer of development rights? I'll explain what that means and Shayna will, of course, as well. And then three, what is the right scale or style of development to utilize the transfer of development rights? So I want to jump down a little bit in the staff report. And one, say that a transfer of development rights is one possible tool for the city to achieve some of those goals in its vision statement for the future. It's a possible tool, it's a tool that can be used to preserve or increase green spaces, protect sensitive areas like floodplains and preserve historic structures. So that's why you would entertain a TDR, transfer of development rights program. What does it actually do in lines thirty-one through thirty-five? The idea is to recognize that property ownership is what's referred to as a bundle of rights. So the right to transfer-